Recording in progress. Recording stopped.
Yes ma'am, thank you so much, thank you so much everyone.
Welcome everyone, uh, the date is May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, meeting of the Lancaster SD Board of Trustees is now called to order. The time is five forty PM. The meeting is being held at the Lancaster Administration Building Board Auditorium, four twenty-two South Center Avenue, Lancaster, Texas. This meeting has been posted in accordance to the Texas Openshooting Meeting Act. I will now take role. Trustee Hamilton.
Present.
Trustee Nichols.
Present.
Vice President Smith.
Present.
Secretary Morris.
Present.
Trustee Cortez.
Present.
Trustee Lewis.
Present.
Myself, President Quorum, has been established. The first item on our, next item on our agenda is Citizens Communication. Okay, we don't have any. We'll now move to our next item, which is a very exciting moment. This is the swearing in and oath of office of District Three position from the May third, two thousand twenty-five special trustee election. An unopposed District Three candidate elected. Uh, I will open with this statement on Monday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. The Lancaster Independent School District Board of Trustees, uh, Board President Ty G. Jones, trustee Marion L. Hamilton, and trustee Queenie Nichols canvassed the results of the May third, two thousand twenty-five joint and special election for District Three, and officially declared a winner for that position. By Texas law, two trustees constituted a quorum for this special call meeting. The numbers are as follows. Janay, excuse me, Honorable Janay Cortez received a hundred and sixty-seven total votes, which was sixty-four point four eight percent, ninety-six early voting in person, and seventy-one Election Day. Nancy Flores received a total of nine votes, three point forty-seven percent, five in person, and four on Election Day. Tamika S. Witfield received a total of eighty-three votes, thirty-two point zero five percent, fifty-two early voting in person, one early voting by mail, and thirty on Election Day. Total votes cast were two hundred fifty-nine, which totaled a hundred and fifty-three early voting in person, one early voting by mail, and one hundred five on Election Day. Based on the canvass results from the joint and special election of, for District Three on Monday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, Honorable Janay Cortez is officially declared the winner of such position. Janay Cortez, a hundred sixty-seven total votes, sixty-four point four eight percent, ninety-six early voting in person, seventy-one on Election Day. Carolyn A., Secretary Carolyn A. Morris was duly elected for the purposes of the May third, two thousand twenty-five election pursuant to the order of cancellation issued on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, canceling the election that was scheduled to be held on May third, two thousand twenty-five. In accordance with Section two point zero five three A of the Texas Election Code, Carolyn A. Morris has been certified as unopposed and hereby elected as School Board Trustee for District Six. I will now ask for Honorable Cortez to convene on the floor to be sworn in.
Greetings to the L I S D Board of, Board of Trustees, community, family, and friends. My name is Emmanuel Cortez, a sophomore student at Lancaster Early College High School, and I am here to assist with swearing in my mother. My mother is a strong, caring woman that has always have a heart for, have a, have a heartfelt emotions for the community and kids. Introducing the often imitated but never duplicated, the Honorable Janay Cortez.
The oath of office, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
Janay Cortez.
Janay Cortez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
Of the Lancaster Independent School District.
Of the Lancaster Independent School District.
Board of Trustees for District Three.
Board of Trustees for District Three.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Pres- preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that at a joint and special election held on May third, twenty twenty-five, Janay Cortez was duly elected State Board Trustee, District Three. Congratulations.
I want you to everybody to take a couple of those back, will you try to get a large group picture really quick?
Marco coming back up. Hey, Father, man, I'm just getting them out of my mouth, man.
Derek Smith.
Can he see the camera, can he see you?
He wants to come over and do it with me because he's.
I'm gonna see if she has anything she wants to say first. I guess you can say it from up here. Good to see you again, man. Yes, sir. Uh, Honorable Cortez, we're gonna go back down and take a photo with you.
All right, guys.
All right, the next item on our agenda is to administer the statement of officer to newly declared elected trustees, which would be Secretary Carolyn A. Morris.
Good evening. So we've been down this road before, so it's gonna be very sweet and simple, okay? I am ministering the oath of office for my mom, Ms. Carolyn A. Morris. Congratulations on another reelection.
Thank you. You grew up with this, right?
So if you would, repeat after me. I state your name.
Carolyn, I, Carolyn Ann Morris.
Raise your right hand. I'm sorry. I state your name.
Carolyn Ann Morris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the Lancaster Independent School District School Board, District Board of Trustees. Uh, let me, let me, let me slow down. Of the Lancaster Independent School District.
Of the Lancaster Independent School District.
Board of Trustees.
Board of Trustees.
For District Six.
For District Six.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. That is. Here's your certificate, and it states, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this certi- this is to certify Carolyn Ann Morris was duly certified as unopposed and is hereby elected as School Board Trustee, District Six, for purposes of the joint and special election held on May third, twenty twenty-five, pursuant to the order of cancellation issued on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, canceling the election that was scheduled to be held on May third, twenty twenty-five. Congratulations. I just want you all to know that my mom has been battling breast cancer, it's no secret, so I'm not violating any HIPAA laws, but she made it here tonight, uh, because of her dedication, only because of her dedication. She just got out of the hospital yesterday, and she had surgery, uh, reconstruction surgery on Friday. So she cares about Lancaster, she cares about the teachers, the students, the staff here in Lancaster. And so we are honored that she could be here tonight and, um, serve the community.
And I am, I am proud to have served this district starting in nineteen eighty-five. Election would have been sitting in the seat for twenty-five years. I have enjoyed everything more. I'm glad to be a part of the future, our future, and our children. We have an awesome demonstration, a path, and all I love what you do. I appreciate what you do, and kids will too. Because why I didn't have to help me father so well in that screen? Yeah, keep on teaching, I mean, thank you.
Recording in progress.
Alright, we are definitely excited of the administration of, uh, Officer both of these honorable trustees who will assist us in navigating the waters that are before us, with this upcoming legislative session, and everything else. Uh, the, uh, I guess before I proceed, do any trustees like to share any words, uh, to our newly elected official before I proceed with the rest of the agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Hamilton.
I'd like to welcome Ms. Cortez to the board, we look forward to working with you.
Trustee Nichols.
Court Trustee Cortez, it's been a journey, and I had opportunity to spend some time speaking with you and reference to this position. I am so happy you're here, because I'm not the new person anymore, you know? But any things that I can help you with, I am here as a team to help you as much as I can. I am definitely happy you're here, welcome. Also, to Trustee, uh, Morris, you have been an example here in this school district, and you have did a fantastic job, and as always, we will continue to look at your leadership and, uh, take advantage of your expertise and your experience. Congratulations.
Mr. President, can I echo on what Ms. Nichols just said?
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, to Ms. Morris, you know, we thank you for your dedication. In fact, I think you're too dedicated at times, and I'm sure I have voiced that to you, like today. But we definitely want to thank you, thank you for being a role model, because often when this gets hard, I have to remember, you know, why I'm here, and that there are people like you that continue in the fight regardless how hard it gets. Somebody has to do it, so thanks for being that role model for me.
Vice President Smith.
Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you to both of you ladies, you guys have, uh, honestly reminded me of what's important, not that I truly lost sight or anything, but thank you, thank you. Trustee Cortez, uh, you know, we've been, we go way back, so, uh, we got some work ahead of us, you know, you know, you know what it is. Trustee Morris, you know the work, you like the path, and we appreciate it. Let's roll up the sleeves and get to it.
Trustee Lewis.
I would say, um, welcome, Ms. Cortez. I can pour into you a little knowledge of what I've learned over the past, what, three, three and a half years? So welcome. Ms. Morris, I think part of my existence and being here is because of you. We go back a little ways as well, so thank you for your service and continued service. Thank you.
Alright. I guess before I do anything, definitely want to welcome, uh, both of you, uh, to this seat, and, uh, look forward to working with the both of you as we work toward our mission, which is empowering our students' purpose and passion to acquire the education, and, uh, we will navigate these waters as I've mentioned, however we need to, to ensure that we are supporting administration and ensuring that our students have the best outcomes available. Dr. Pereira, and then I'll open the floor for the both of you to share.
Yes, um, ladies, I just want to say, uh, thank you for all the work that you will do going forward, and the work that you've done in the past, Ms. Morris, Ms. Cortez, I want you to know that it's okay not to know everything right away. Um, you know, I've been in the seat as a superintendent for thirteen years, and I'm still learning. Uh, so it is a lot, but know that, uh, this board, uh, really does want to help if needed. Um, and so I've watched them for the last four years, uh, interact, and I know that there's a wealth of knowledge here. Um, Ms. Morris, you know, I'm thrilled to have you back on the team, so let's move forward, um, as one, and together we'll do all the best for our, um, young scholars. That's what it's about.
Right, uh, Honorable Cortez, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Jones, just wanted to say, um, just to the community, the teachers and staff of the district, uh, thank you so much for your support. A lot of you I have known along the journey of just being a parent within the district. Thank you for being patient, because I'm very strong out there when it comes to the children, not just my son, but all of the children. And I think that, uh, I commend each of you for the hard work that you have done to bring our students to, uh, one hundred percent graduation, bring this district to where it is, and thank you each for leaving your footprints in the sand.
Right, thank you very much. And last but not least, we're gonna allow, uh, Secretary Morris to share some words, and Secretary Morris, at the conclusion of your words, would you read the statement that that is before you?
I sure will.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Jones. Well, Honorable Trustee Cortez, it is my pleasure, my honor, to welcome you to the Lancaster Independent School District Board of Trustees. Uh, I wouldn't have missed it if they would have had me in ICU, they would have had to bring me, you know, hospital here, because I could not have missed this, because, uh, when one put their whole heart and what they believe in, and what they will do, you can't help but join on board. So I want you to know that I'm here, I don't know everything, I'm still learning. Even after all of these years and lengths, almost forty years, I'm still learning, and you can teach me something, and we can teach each other. And I look forward to it, I look forward to working with you, and, uh, if you see me slipping, just tap on my shoulder like Trustee Hamilton down there, she has tapped on my shoulder quite a bit. Tap on my shoulder, and I'll tap on your shoulder, and we're gonna get it done, because we're here for one reason. They say we're here for the kids, but if your head is not on right, your neck is not screwed tight, which is our superintendent, so we know she's screwed tight, then our children are running around, and I, staff and administration is keeping them all together, so we got a good team of eight up here, you all. And it looks good, and I welcome it, and I'm sorry it took me so long, but I truly wanted to tell you how much I appreciate you taking this challenge on. I knew you a little bit on the Lions Club, I knew you would like this. So thank you again, and I welcome you.
Right.
Oh, and I need to read this. So this is the statement of Officer. I, Carolyn Ann Morris, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contribute, or promised to contribute any money or anything of value, or promised any office, uh, public office or employment for the given or withholding of a vote at this, at the election at which I was elected, or as a warrant to secure my appointment of confirmation. Whichever the case may be, so help me God. The title of the position that I will, which elected appointed is the Lancaster Independent School District, District Six. Execution under the penalty of perjury. I declare that I have read the foregoing statement and that the facts stated herein are true on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, and I will sign this document into office.
Alright, thank you very much, Secretary Morris. Let's give them another round of applause, please. Alright, the next item on our agenda is consideration of board action to approve resolution and order declaring results of May third, two thousand twenty-five, special trustee election for District Three and District Six. I will now read this into the record. Lancaster Independent School District Resolution and Order declaring results of May third, two thousand twenty-five, general election for District Three, and declaring unopposed District Six candidate elected. State of Texas County of Dallas, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Lancaster Independent School District, the district ordered a general election of officers to be held on Saturday, May third, two thousand twenty-five, the election, and whereas on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the Board of Trustees declared the unopposed candidate in single-member District Six elected. And whereas the Board of Trustees has investigated all matters pertaining to said election, including the ordering, giving notice, officers holding and making returns of said election, and whereas the election officers who held the election have duly made the returns of the results thereof, and said returns have been duly delivered to the Board of Trustees. Therefore, be it ordered by the Board of Trustees of the Lancaster Independent School District that one, the Board of Trustees officially finds and determines that the election was duly ordered, proper notice of the election was duly given, proper election officers were duly appointed prior to the election, the election was duly held, the district complied with Federal Voting Rights Act and the Texas Election Code, due returns of the result of the election have been made and delivered, and the Board of Trustees has duly canvassed said returns, all in accordance with the law and the order calling the election. Two, the Board of Trustees certifies that the vote totals in Exhibit A include early voting votes by precinct received under Section eighty-seven point one-two-three-one of the Texas Election Code. Three, the Board of Trustees certifies that Janay Cortez is declared duly elected District Three trustee. And four, the Board of Trustees certifies that Carolyn Ann Morris is declared unopposed candidate for District Six trustee for a three-year term for said positions, or until successors have been duly elected and qualified. And be it further ordered that each elected trustee be issued a certificate of election and take the oath of office as prescribed by law. The above resolution and order being read, it was moved by, do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Vice President Smith, and second by?
Second.
Trustee Hamilton, a little slow down there, Lewis. Uh, the same do pass, thereupon, uh, do I have a vote? Would you guys give me a show of hands on your vote? Alright. Motion does pass. Uh, thereupon, the question being called, the members of the board vote seven I, zero no. Passed and adopted on this fourteenth day of May two thousand twenty-five. Signed by Taiji Jones, Board President, and attested by Carolyn Ann Morris, Secretary and Board of Trustees, Lancaster Independent School District. Alright, that is complete, that deserves another round of applause, we have completed that process. We are now a official team of eight, ready to get things going. And we're gonna make a slight modification to our agenda. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and recess in a closed session first, uh, as authorized by the Texas Opens Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code five-five-one point zero-seven-one, legal advice, school attorney, five-five-one point zero-seven-two, deliberation regarding real property, five-five-one point zero-seven-four, personnel matters, and five-five-one point zero-seven-six, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits. We have a total of seven items that we'll be discussing, uh, in closed session, which you can identify those on your agendas. The time is now six thirteen PM.
Uh, Mr. President, one thing, I just want everyone to see how nice this is. This is the first time in a long time, this is beautiful, with our administration and our administrative secretary did a wonderful job, and our certificate.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Okay.
He said, I was breaking me out.
Yeah.
None of that, none of that. Can't hear that. No we on.
None of that, none of that, can't hear that. Yesterday, I went to bed at like eight thirty nine.
I didn't get off work till about, about midnight.
Yeah, whipping and running this last two weeks. Tomorrow night we have the athletic banquet. Tomorrow night we have the athletic banquet. The athletic banquet. In Duncanville or banquet hall. Six thirty. We have the patrol tomorrow too. Main teacher of the year and all that. It's at a different place.
Right, the time is now eight twenty P M. We are reconvening in the open session. Uh, we have two items that we will deal with, uh, consideration and approval.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, we are reconvening at eight twenty P M. Uh, we have two items that we will address coming out of closed session. Doctor Pereira.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll get my mic to work over here, I'm gonna call forward, um, Doctor Gray. You sent that information to our board and our community. Doctor Gray, the floor is yours, sir, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Board President Jones, Superintendent Doctor Pereira, Board of Trustees. I bring forth the recommendation for Director of Classroom Innovation and Culture, Todd Tanisha Stevenson, for the position of Director of Classroom Innovation and Culture.
Right.
As a results-driven and visionary educational leader, Todd Tanisha.
All right, uh, but we have heard this information enclosed. Do I have a motion? Vice President Smith.
I motion that we take the H R's recommendation and bring on, uh, Todd Stevenson.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second. You guys now check your devices to cast your votes. And this is a motion to approve the Director of Classroom Innovation and Culture to be held by Todd Tanisha Stevenson. Uh, hold on, just, yeah, we still getting the vote in, but yeah, yeah. I, I just said your name, but now you, you, you can remain standing, remain standing, remain standing. And we're waiting on.
Board President Jones, uh, we are waiting for Trustee Lewis and Vice President Smith.
If you will.
Maybe refresh.
Pull down, yeah, just refresh your screens if you don't mind. Okay.
Vice President Smith.
He's still, he's still working on logging in. If he doesn't, in thirty seven seconds, I'm gonna take a verbal vote from him and, and keep moving. All right. And, uh, Honorable Cortez as well.
Okay, at this point, we have, in regards to the motion to approve the Director of Classroom Innovation and Culture, motion passed unanimously.
All right, Miss Stevenson, welcome to share some words if you like.
All right, first I want to apologize for my voice. Allergies. Um, so, good evening, Board of Trustees, President Jones, Superintendent Doctor Pereira. I'm truly honored to accept the role of Director of Classroom Innovation and Culture. This is more than a new title. It's a continuation of the calling I feel to serve, inspire, and innovate in education. I'm grateful for every experience that has led to this moment, and I look forward to impacting our district in new and meaningful ways. As I step into this role, I stand on the promise of Jeremiah twenty-nine and eleven. For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord. I believe this is one of those plans, and I am excited for what's ahead. To my staff at Beltline and Houston Elementary, thanks for all you do every day to impact student achievement. To my family, thank you for being my anchor and my cheerleaders. To my amazing mother and father who are here tonight, please stand. Mother and father. Yeah, my. My mom and daddy still together, y'all. Um, my daughter Taryn, your faith, sacrifice, encouragement have shaped the leader I am today. Every step of this journey has been walked on the foundation you built for me, and I'm forever grateful. I also want to recognize my brother Trevor, who's also in the audience, and he makes me a home-cooked meal every day. To my colleagues across the district, specifically Cherish Pipkins, Yvonne Thornton, and Renetta Perkins, thank you for your collaboration, encouragement, and the ways you sharpened my leadership. To Doctor Barker, thank you for your guidance and for always challenging me to lead with both strategy and heart. And to our Superintendent Doctor Pereira and the Board of Trustees, thank you for your visionary leadership and for seeing the potential in me to serve at a higher level. As I step into the role of Director of Classroom Innovation and Culture, I do so with gratitude, humility, and a deep hope for what we build together next. I'm excited to continue this journey with you, just in a new lane. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Miss Stevenson. And just FYI, I do have on some fancy socks tonight. All right, Doctor Gray, you have your next item.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent, uh, Doctor Pereira, uh, Board of Trustees, I bring forth, uh, a recommendation for Principal of Elsie Roberts Middle School, Doctor Patrice Ruffin Brown.
So, Board, we do have this item, is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Vice President Smith.
I motion that we take his recommendation and we hire Doctor Patrice Ruffin Brown.
A motion by Vice President Smith.
Second.
Second by Trustee Hamilton. Check your devices, prepare to cast your votes.
Okay, Trustee Cortez, uh, whenever you're ready for your vote. Okay, at this time, President Jones, um, in regards to motion to approve the principal at Elsie Robertson Middle School, motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much.
Good evening. I am very grateful to be here today and very honored for the opportunity to serve in Lancaster I S D. I am very fond of the school community, and I absolutely look forward to bringing the years of experience in public education to this district to serve the students well.
Well, definitely, uh, welcome Doctor Ruffin Brown to Lancaster I S D. And, uh, I'd also like to affirm you for spending some time at Skyline High School. So, uh, yeah, I just gotta say that, you know, go Raiders. All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, thank you very much and welcome again. The, uh, next item on our agenda, we're gonna switch it up just a little bit. We're gonna go to our maintenance and operations, uh, update. Doctor Pereira.
Yes, thank you, uh, President Jones, gonna go forward, uh, with Mr. Oster. Present that information to our board and our community. Mr. Oster, the floor is yours when you're done.
Good evening, President Jones, Distinguished Board of Trustees, and Doctor Pereira. Here tonight to present our operations update. Since my last update, April ninth, maintenance operations been staying on top of requests throughout the district. Most recently, we repaired the sidewalk around the administration building, and we have more throughout the district that's all been prioritized. And here are some pictures of, uh, beginning work and the ending and around the building. There was some libs that were trip hazards. We're actively progressing, uh, key projects, including the stadium and elevator repairs with legal process nearing completion to begin the work soon. And additionally, V C R now has been invited to present the scoreboard update on their delays, May twenty-second, to the Board of Trustees and our community and the students that have been eagerly waiting. Right now, M and O is maintaining a ninety-nine percent completion percentage of work orders. And I'm also proud to say that our partnership with Ideal Impact from July twenty-twenty-four through April twenty-twenty-five, the district has saved over ninety-six thousand on district utilities. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Oster? Hearing none, thank you very much, Mr. Oster.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda will be, uh, discussion of Infinitus, Infinitus. Learning not to exceed a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Doctor Pereira.
Thank you, President Jones, I'm gonna call forward, uh, my Deputy Doctor Barker to present that information to our board and our community. Doctor Barker, the floor is yours, and I know you wanted to share something about the, uh, contract process.
I'll share at least what's on my side. Dana and her group may wanna give a one-on-one in contracts, uh, one-on-one. Um, so, good evening, um, uh, Board Chair Jones, esteemed Board members, Superintendent Doctor Pereira. Um, last, at last board meeting, you met the C E O and one of the chief, the chief program officer for Infinitus, and they came to you to talk about, uh, how we're changing our remediation offerings, um, at the high school. And in our process with Infinitus, um, so I, I will say, we're here to talk about approval of going beyond the one hundred thousand dollar threshold. Uh, we think we may get to, um, a little bit more than a hundred thousand because of, um, the number of students that we could potentially have that would need remediation in English one, English two, Algebra one, or T S I in the early college. Um, so, being that the summer program is upon us, we want to make sure we have enough cushion to be able to service as many students as needed. And so that's why the one hundred and twenty-five thousand threshold is there. Um, right now, we, um, have gone through a process with them being an approved vendor because they went through the R F P process with, I think it was Houston Independent School District a couple of years ago. So they're an approved vendor across the state because they were a part of that process. Uh, when we entered into contract with them, we looked at the numbers that we potentially have now and added ten percent, um, as far as for the number of students that would be serviced. Um, initially, our contract with them was, or is ninety thousand. And, um, with that being ninety thousand, that's below the threshold of what we have to bring to the board for approval. Um, but tonight, because we potentially could reach that one hundred thousand mark, I wanted to go ahead and bring them forth to, uh, answer any questions that you all might have, but also to get them approved so that there would be no roadblocks when we get to June, or should I say, when we get to May twenty-third, when we receive our star scores, we'll know more about how our students did on T S I and be able to put together individualized plans for them to be ready for remediation on June second. And so, at the next board meeting, we'll be asking for approval, um, for the contracted amount with them to go beyond the, the threshold that the superintendent, those who are indemnified by the, by the district to be able to sign a contract, which that threshold amount is one hundred thousand. But we think, um, we could potentially, um, um, go to an amount that would not exceed one twenty-five. Now, I will also say, we also have a goal because it helps us as a district to, um, on our C C M R goals. It also helps our students, um, to get more students T S I met. So, we have been discussing moving the opportunity for students to become T S I met to a lower grade. Um, we've, we've kind of, not really, but kind of worked with our students um, as they're in their bridge program in early college to take the T S I. Uh, but we're, we wanna make sure that we have a solid, um, remediation, uh, opportunity for them so that when they take it in the bridge program, the expectation, their expectation, our expectation has always been for them to pass, but some of our students, their expectation has been, I wanna see what's on the test. Um, so, we're being intentional by making sure that when our students do get that opportunity uh, prior to their freshman year, that they are ready to take college courses. And T S I, um, is a requirement to be able to, to take English and math, um, when you're in the early college program. That is also, and I'm, I know I'm saying a lot, but that is also one of the barriers that we found when we've had to have conversations with parents, that your students can't contin, your student can't continue in the early college program if they are not T S I met. So, the earlier we can start getting our students T S I met, um, the less number of, uh, those conversations we have to have with parents, and the less disappointment from our students. Cause the students who've had to exit going into their junior year, it, those are very, very tough conversations to have. So, we, we take responsibility in that in saying that when our students get accepted their freshman year, that this helps us to ensure that we put together our best foot, we put our best foot forward to make sure that when they're in their junior year, they aren't disappointed and that we meet the promise that, that we're all giving to our students, that they will finish with an associate. So, with that, I know I talked around the contract process, but I tried to do it within context of what's happening here. Um, and I will take any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Doctor Barker. Mr. Lewis, Trustee Lewis.
Excuse me, Doctor Barker.
Yes, sir.
Questions here?
Uh-huh.
The ninety thousand, and correct me if I'm wrong, you mentioned, that's what, that is, that's what currently is budgeted for.
Yes.
So, fifteen thousand is what would take us over to the one, so it's not ninety plus?
Right, it's not ninety plus this, no.
How many students do you think are being impacted by this?
So, right now, we have, what we budgeted for was a hundred in each area that you see, well, you see the three hundred for the E O C testers and a hundred for the T S I testers. Um, I, I, I don't think what our early numbers indicate, we probably will not go over the three hundred for the E O C testers, but we are trying to increase the number of T S I, um, opportunities for our students.
Have we looked at why we're here at this point?
Uh, yes.
What possibly we get as a district do?
Yes, so, with the T S I, the initial T S I numbers, those were the sophomores. So, those were the students who had an opportunity to take the test and they weren't success. Those were sophomores and some rising juniors. So, our hope is that we get the remediation they're able to pass, and then they can go on into the early college, as far as the, I'm sorry, take college credit at Dallas College as juniors. Um, we want to make sure we adequately prepare, we've tried to prepare them with the resources that we've had, and we realize that we need to expand beyond that to make sure that our students are successful. The number, the increased number with the T S I is us trying to include those students who are rising eighth graders into the ninth grade. Um, some of the, the barriers that, uh, prevent our students from passing, um, we do have, and I kinda said it, um, 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 and not emphasize it, kinda said it, uh, in jest, but it is true that we do have a population of our early college kids who take it to kinda see, so they know what the test, uh, what to test for. So, we're trying to prevent that because that is a cost to the district. Every time they test, we pay for units. So, we're trying to prevent that. Being able to have a dedicated remediation program, they get to see then, so then they could go into it a little bit more focused. Uh, the way the T S I design, is designed, it is designed to measure, yes, college readiness skills, but it is baked into our curriculum already. And so, again, this is what we've, what we've realized with our students, this may not be across. And so, again, this is what we've, what we've realized with our students, this may not be across the state, but with our students, I mean, I used to say this when I was a principal, when our students know the rules of the game, they'll beat you. It doesn't matter what the game is. And so a lot of times they show up for, the TSI test is different from the EOC, is different from the SAT, is different from the ACT. The, the information is formatted differently and they don't necessarily know the rules of that game. This gives us an opportunity for them to learn the rules of the game before they play. And so, so yeah, we, we've increased the, we potentially, we, I think that we'll be able to increase our number in the TSI too, and that's where the fifteen thousand. It's thirty-five thousand potentially that it would come in.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Barker. The next item we have is discussion of curriculum materials. Dr. Pereira?
Yes, thank you, President Jones. I'm going to call forward Ms. Bell to deliver that information. And I think our name called for Ms. Reddick as well, but Ms. Bell, got it. And, but happy belated birthday, Ms. Bell.
Thank you.
No.
Thanks. Thank you, Dr. Pereira. Good evening, President Jones, our distinguished board members and Dr. Pereira. This evening, I would like to seek approval to participate in the Blue Bun and Spanish pilot for math, as well as to adopt the pre-K three scholastic curriculum. And of course, this is for a future action item. This particular slide that I'm showing you right now, I want to remind everyone that we recently adopted the Blue Bun and Math curriculum for Kinder through eighth grade as well as Algebra one. And this particular opportunity to participate in a pilot for Spanish math would place our district amongst the first to participate in the Blue Bun and Spanish adoption for math. It also would provide us the opportunity for all bilingual and ESL students in the district to greatly benefit from the, from this particular resource as we are very committed to ensuring that all students are receiving access to curriculum materials that address their individual needs, in particular, in this case, related to language needs. So I've included a copy of the application and assurances for you to review in this particular slide. Also, on our next slide, with also seeking to adopt the pre-K three scholastic curriculum, this particular slide, we've also provided some information and resources for you. This, this curriculum actually provides high-quality instruction that is culturally relevant and includes social, emotional skills for our little pre-K three scholars. So we've also, again, included some resources for you where you can have and gain access, direct access to those materials to, to view those at, at a, at your own leisure. Again, this is a future action item and we are asking for your approval at the next actual board meeting to move forward with, going forward with the Blue Bun and Math Spanish pilot and the pre-K three scholastic adoption. And I'll take any questions at this time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bell. Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Bell? All right, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next item we have on our agenda is discussion of memorandum of understanding between Paul Quinn College and Lancaster Independent School District. Dr. Pereira?
Yes, thank you, President Jones. I'm going to call for Dr. Taylor to present that information to our board and our community. Dr. Taylor, the floor is yours when you're ready.
Good evening, Board President Jones, distinguished board members and Superintendent Dr. Pereira. While we are grateful for all of our college partnerships, we are especially excited to present the Tiger to Tiger Initiative with Paul Quinn College. As you know, Paul Quinn is a proud, historically black college and university, HBCU, with a strong legacy of academic excellence and community empowerment. This evening, and I bring forth your review and approval, a proposed memorandum of understanding, MOU, between Paul Quinn College and Lancaster ISD. This MOU outlines a strategic partnership designed to expand and enrich student learning experiences. Through this collaboration, our high school students will gain increased access to dual enrollment opportunities specifically focused on earning Level one and Level two certificates in business administration with an emphasis in entrepreneurship. While we currently offer other pathways, Paul Quinn College will be the first HBCU in Lancaster ISD to offer Level one and Level two certificates under a formalized MOU, marking a significant milestone in our college partnerships. One of the most exciting aspects of this initiative is the opportunity for students to receive entrepreneurship training, equip them with the tools to design, launch, and sustain successful businesses by harnessing their creativity, innovation, and academic learning. This partnership strongly aligns with Lancaster ISD's board goal, excuse me, board goal one. We will provide world-class teaching and learning experiences whereby each student grows and develops at least one grade level every academic year, supports our district's improvement plan, performs objective four for college career and military readiness, CCMR, and demonstrates our continued commitment to student success, workforce readiness, and community engagement. I would like to thank our planning committee over our meetings with Paul Quinn College, Ms. Murray, Dr. Hairgrove, Ms. Moffett, Dr. Looney, and Paul Quinn College's leadership team. Sending a special shout out to President Sorrell and then his special assistant to the president, Dr. Shapshar, has been very instrumental in moving this forward. Thank you for your support and I respectfully recommend the board approve this MOU partnership with Paul Quinn College. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Taylor. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing nine, that's exciting work. Thank you. The next item we have on our agenda is also a, let me get to this agenda here. Discussion memorandum of understanding between Wiley University and Lancaster Independent School District. Dr. Pereira?
Yes, thank you, President Jones. Dr. Taylor, the floor is yours again, madam.
All right, thank you. Hello again. I am pleased to present for your review and approval a groundbreaking memorandum of understanding between Wiley University and Lancaster ISD, a partnership that takes an innovative approach to college access by offering conditional admittance for both our high school students and their parents or guardians, which in the MOU is stated as support persons, into undergraduate programs. As many of you know, Wiley University is also a respected HBCU with a legacy of academic excellence, community service, and social mobility. This proposed MOU opens another door for qualified Lancaster ISD students and their families to pursue undergraduate degrees, creating a generational learning model that strengthens the college-going culture in our community. Some of the key highlights of this partnership is, one, the conditional admittance, eligible high school students and their parent support persons may be admitted to Wiley's undergraduate programs contingent upon meeting academic and participation requirements, support for CCMR by offering students and their families additional access to higher educational opportunities. And then, and helpful, we're very, very hopeful throughout our transition in continued dialogue that this MOU establishes the foundation for expanded collaboration. That may include future phases for increasing dual credit opportunities, potentially exploring early college options, further aligning with our goal to provide multiple post-secondary pathways for our students. This initiative is another powerful example of how Lancaster ISD is reimagining educational partnership to serve not only individuals but entire households. It reflects our district's strategic commitment to innovation, equity, and excellence. We are proud to move forward with Wiley University with the board's consideration and we respectfully request the board's approval of this MOU.
All right, thank you, Dr. Taylor. Any questions or comments on this item?
Um, President Jones, I'd like to make a comment. Thank you so much. I remember when you started working on this. So to see that we do have the two colleges, what you're working on, you know, completing, thank you so much for your time. I know it took a lot of work to do that, so thank you. I'm hoping we'll get more colleges as well, but thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Taylor, for getting us going with these. And I look forward to working with these institutions. Thank you again. All right, the next item we have before us is discussion and planning for the upcoming student device refresh, including inventory review and replacement schedule. Dr. Pereira?
Yes, thank you. We have, not Mr. Williamson, but we have Mr. Thornhill to present that information to our board and our community.
Uh, Board President Jones, distinguished board, and Superintendent Dr. Pereira, I am here to present on the Lancaster ISD student device refresh. It's that time of the year where we are on campuses collecting devices and it's time to talk about student device refresh. So while we're collecting devices, we've been collecting for the last three weeks, we've been receiving a lot of devices either being broken or not returned at all. Therefore, next year, if we don't have a refresh, we will be, we will have a device shortage. We won't have enough, we can't continue to be one-on-one. So we've come up, we spent time, even before then, we knew that this time would come. So we've been discussing possible refresh. We're talking about a five-year refresh plan that we had before. I'm going to have our asset manager, Ms. McParland, come up and talk about our previous five years and how, where we started and where we're looking to go.
Good evening. In 2019, we started a district-wide audit of devices. And at that time, we were able to determine in May of 2020, amongst the COVID business, that we had approximately five thousand two hundred Chromebook devices for our students. Since that time, you can look at this chart here that's been provided for you. Over the course of five years, that amount has been reduced, five thousand one hundred devices. So we have lost that many in our inventory. And you can see how that breaks down. If you put a cost to that using an average cost of two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per device, it's one million four-hundred-and-fifty-three-plus dollars to replace those lost devices to our inventory. Now, in that time, we did add some devices, so we're not just five thousand down. But I also want to add to that information. At the bottom of your chart, you can see that we also have an additional fifteen-hundred-and-forty-eight Chromebooks that are being used by our Kinder first and second grade scholars. And those Chromebooks have now reached end of life. They can no longer update their Chrome operating system. And why does that matter? Well, one, they're ten years old, so they've really held on and done their duty. But now they are not compatible with a lot of the testing apps and instructional apps that our students are trying to use, especially at those grade levels. So with that, we're going to talk about a five-year plan and then what we can do with the repurposing.
So with the information you just received, we reached out to multiple vendors and we went out and said, we looked at all the best options we have for student devices. So here on the screen, you will see several of the options that we, we came up with, me with the vendors. Our first vendor, of course, was Dell because that was the last two big orders that we had before. So with our Dell devices, their cost kind of went up comparable to the two-eighty-five that we discussed earlier. Right now, they're priced at about three-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. But we also, with all the broken devices and damage we have every single year, we, we would like to have a warranty, so we looked at everybody warranty package. So if you see for Dell, it's three-hundred-and-thirty-eight plus the warranty of a hundred and fifty dollars just for three years of coverage, which will give us about four-hundred-and-eighty-eight per student to make sure that we can cover all damages if anything occurs, as well as device. While we did that, we went through all the other latest and greatest models. We reached out to every company we can think of. We talked to about four different companies and just gave us all your devices. All these are Chromebooks, as you can see, based off our students having Chromebooks throughout the district. So we have Acer at four-twenty-five, we have Lenovo's, which used to be the cheapest model, but they even have went up, they were the most affordable, the way we thought we were going to go. Now they're up to four-fifty-eight. The HP Fortis, which is a pretty good model, but they're five-fifty-eight. And then we also, a lot of the vendors reached out and told us about the Mac iPads with keyboards, which iPad is three-hundred-and-twenty-four, but with the keyboard to make it exactly like a laptop, it's a hundred and nine for the keyboard, which with four years of warranty would take us to five-hundred-and-twelve dollars. So with that information, everything that we received, as well as you will see later in the presentation, our return in investment that we can get from devices, we actually believe that the Apple iPad with the keyboards will be the best investment to our district and our students and we will get the most return to our investment. So if we, if the board approves and moves with our recommendation, we will get, I actually brought one today so you can kind of see the device. We will go forward with a iPad. With the iPad, we will purchase a four-year Apple Care for damages. We will get the JAMP school lifetime license. What makes that important is, unlike a Chromebook, we can lock it down if a student reports a loss and we, we educate them on how they need to report it, we can lock it down and no one can use it. We would, we can track it and know where it is. We can tell you the last time it was logged on. We have way more capabilities with a, with the iPad than we do with our Chromebooks. Our lease options, we will have, we will want to do a four-year lease because we need such a big order because of the shortage that we have. So right now, we're still trying to get final numbers, but we've already received several quotes and we know we're anywhere between two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand per year or, or two-hundred-and-ninety-five, but it won't exceed one-point-three million. We got it at, we guaranteed a zero percent interest rate. And then, of course, at the end of it, we will lease the own, so we will own the equipment and you're going to see later in my presentation, then we have the opportunity to determine what we want to do with the devices at the end of the lease. So just one more quick thing I just want to point out, what makes these so, so great? Because if you look at it, they're way more secure. So with these keyboards, one of the things, if y'all got TikTok, y'all see the little challenges where they're breaking the keyboards off and breaking the keys and starting fires? You can't break these. If you break these off, it's a real problem. So these do not come off. So we can't break them off. It's way harder to damage the shell. It's a lot harder. So if you drop them, they're ways, a lot sturdier. So like Chromebook, you brought, key's going to pop off, the screen might crack, the case is going to crack. But these are a lot sturdier. They fit in a backpack, they're a lot lighter, they're a lot easier for kids to carry. So there's a lot of benefits that come with, come with this design and this device. So I'm going to quickly go through this. This is, this is kind of the, the idea of the process, how it would work. If you look at the first year, the first year just shows where we are currently. If you, I also want to highlight K first and second because we usually go higher quick. But you can see those numbers, those are, like she said, ten-year-old devices. They don't even make thirty-one eighty-nines. We couldn't find them if we tried to. So our goal is to make sure we get those kids and think of them and make sure they get them in the newer devices so that they have something that operates. But let's go down to the second one that's highlighted, year twenty-five, twenty-six. And you look at it, that, that will be our first, where we will implement the Apple iPads. Just let's follow ninth grade. So our goal, most importantly, is to buy in from parents to make sure that these are your devices. So once we issue these devices, this is your device for four years. You're going to carry this device for four years. So once we hand it to you, we train you, we go through that process, you will go through the whole, your whole four years with this device. So in twenty-twenty-five, you have, you can see, you have the Apple iPad. If you look at twenty-six, twenty-seven, you follow that blue line, that's their iPad all the way to their senior year. And then at that year, we would look at a possible refresh and what we would like to do with that device at the end of the lease. Again, so you want, you might think, what about the seniors? So look at the purple. If we look at twenty-five, twenty-six, the senior device, they graduate in one year. Once they, once they graduate, that device is going to recycle back down to the year of twenty-six, twenty-seven, to our new incoming freshman. And then they're going to keep that device for the next three years until a possible refresh. But that's kind of the mindset of that, of that, of that refresh. And then for our K through eight, Ms. Nita's going to tell you, we strategically made sure that we refreshed, we're going to have an additional about twenty-two to twenty-three hundred devices. How are we going to repurpose that so our kids can have newer devices and, and operating devices that's not ten-year-olds to take their tests and their assessments and learning tools?
So with this plan, this slide you're looking at now talks about how we're going to, proposing to repurpose the Chromebooks that would be taken from the ninth through twelfth grade. For our very first goal is to repurpose the Chromebooks to our Kinder first and second grade scholars. So those classes have the correct Chromebook with the proper operating system for any of our instructional applications and testing. And then the second goal would be to take the, a portion of those and send them to the sixth grade center and to the middle school so that we have additional inventory to replace any that have been broken or lost and continue to support the one-to-one at the middle school and the sixth grade center. And then finally, our third goal would just have some on hand so that we could be able to replace as things break or get lost. And then finally, so that you know that we have researched and confirmed that the models that we have at those upper grades will be able to update four more years through twenty-twenty-nine. So they will hold us during this refresh.
I don't know if I introduced her, but this is Ms. Nita McParland. She's our asset manager. She does, she like ten out of ten. So she's, all this information, we've been meeting every day, just going through it. all this information, we've been meeting every day, just going through it. She knows number. If I bring up anything, she's gonna spit back at things from ten years. If she like, oh, we did this, she's like the best. So, uh, this Miss Nita, she does a, a great job for us. Okay, so like what I talked about, the return on investment. So, if we get these devices, one of the things I, I can say, at the end of the lease, we have the opportunity to, uh, take these devices and Apple guarantees fifty dollars per device, which estimates around the value of a hundred and fifteen thousand, uh, cause it's guaranteed that they, they would take these back and that's what we get. That'll almost pay off our next term of our next lease with the new devices coming in. Third-party vendors, we ma- we've only met with two. We're looking for a third one. Uh, both of them quoted us around a hundred and eight, a hundred and ten, uh, dollars per device if it's in good condition. So, that'd give us about a two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars return on investment, almost the entirety of our first new lease, if we can keep up with the devices and keep them in good condition. So, the investment is, uh, great for the Apple iPads. Chromebooks, we haven't sold a single one back. Everything's been used for parts or, uh, repurposed in a different way. So, the, the return on investment here, uh, is a lot greater for these devices. Uh, one of the key things that we would do differently if, uh, if approved by the board is mandatory parent training before, uh, parent training. Before giving a student device or, uh, we will have parents come in, cause they also need to know, uh, understand their insurance policy and, uh, technology fees and how they works. Broken, lost, stolen is the most, uh, our biggest, um, loss in the district. So, actually wondering what that, how that means and what that means for you as a parent. It's something that needs to be communicated instead of just on the paper. Cause a lot of times when I speak to parents, and we speak to a lot of parents about, well, somebody stole it, so they need to pay for it. But that's not really how the process works. But we need to have that training so we can understand that. And at that same time, we can also do our online safety training, uh, which was a big hit for us early in the school year. And then the last thing is staff training, this, uh, these devices, because we, you guys, uh, approve and we appreciate you approving the staff devices, they speak to each other. So, we are able to do, our learning's gonna go to another level with these devices. Because our, we have Apple School Manager, which allows our teachers to strategically, they can lock down student computers. They can pretty much control their computers while they're in class. So, if I only want you to see three, three, uh, link, web links, you can only see three web links based off what I, what I did in these devices. Of course, for you to be that skilled, we have to train you. So, we will have staff training planned out. We will meet, uh, with Miss Thorn and her team, the, and the principals of how we can plan out training so that we can make sure that we're getting the, the most out of our investment to these Apple iPads. With that, uh, I'll take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thornhill. Mr. Clues?
Uh, I have several questions for you, Mr. Thornhill. Um, how would you monitor over the four years, uh, with, say, the Apple device? How would you monitor the care of those devices?
If the students keep them?
Right. So, are they, do the device, does the device stay at school or does it travel home with them?
It travels with the student. So, go ahead. So, it's, it's gonna travel with the student. So, the goal is to, to first to get there, to get the, to give it to the students, to get the investment of them, this, their device. So, we would have their training with the parents and the students. And then we also, the students, we're doing advisory with, uh, uh, high school, they got advisory. So, we would go through, uh, keeping up the device. The principal, we can meet with principals and they can, you know, have some kinda competition or some kinda raffle of who brings a device and keeping up with it. But as far as just coming to have to show us the device, we won't, we necessarily don't have to.
Does the cost increase with the, say, Apple device for the, um, the deposit? There's a yearly deposit for the device, right?
Yeah, so, well, currently, we have a, a policy in place where we do a technology fee, which I also wanna revisit this summer. You'll probably hear more about, cause these devices are a little different about how we wanna do it. But it, it wouldn't necessarily increase, but it will be, it definitely will be a fee each year, so we can make sure that he's covered and protected.
If I misplace the device, kinda take me through the process of how it, I, I, I have an Apple device, so I know how I can look it up. Um, but how would the district, I mean, what it, what does that process look like for you all? And then also for updates, who does the update?
So, the updates is, once you, uh, updates is our technology, our networking team, they push them out. And Apple also puts out the updates too, but our team pushes out their own updates. We do it monthly. It's our monthly patch. So, at the end of each month, we push out our updates, even to the staff devices. So, each month, we, you know, we have to push it out. So, that, that's the first update part. What was the first part of that question? Oh, monitoring already is. So, with, with the monitoring with the JAMP, so the system is, once a kid, if he loses or misplaced a device, same thing they do now technically. You're supposed to report it to our, our tech that's on campus. You come in and we have a form that they fill out to say that with their loss. If they don't have it, if we can't retrieve it or find out where it is, then you have to file a police report. And then you have, then we're, they'll come back to us and we go from there, from the next point. Determine, you know, if you have to pay for the device or what's next.
Okay. I think one of, one of the challenges, I as a parent, and I've seen this with the Chromebook, uh, the Chromebook versus the plastic backpacks that we're required to have. Those backpacks as being plastic only hold so much weight. And so, I said that to say, the device is generally the one that gets damaged the most. Are we possibly looking at revising that backpack policy? Or, I, I think as a parent, for me, because of the situation with the, the, the Chromebook, I would prefer him not having one, uh, that comes home. But my, my question is around the, the device and the, um, plastic or see-through, if I should say, or backpacks, because they're not durable.
No, there is, has not been a, a discussion about the backpack or the change in it. Uh, what I can tell you is the Apple device does have a sturdier cover on it and it is a lighter weighted, um, item. Um, and so, I think it's more durable, uh, than the current Chromebooks that we do have. Uh, but we have not discussed that at all. What I have seen many parents do is buy a sleeve for their students to they put their, um, Chromebooks in and they put it inside of their backpack. So, that's that extra layer cushion, but we have not explored that, um, at all. Uh, again, I think the more durability of that machine, um, and the lighter weight, I think makes a difference as well. Um, you know, we, we give out backpacks, but they're not the most sturdy ones. We give out what is donate it to us. And so, that's one of the things I think we can share with our parents as well. But we can look into that, but we have not. Um, cause again, that's a, another cost for the district that I'm not sure where those dollars would come from at this point. Thank you.
Number Cortez?
Excuse me. My question kinda lied with where trustee Clues was with regards to an annual mandatory refresh. Um, I kinda, it was just kind of, uh, laid back, but is there gonna be a plan for a specific? You know, cause if they're gonna get this at a freshman and then expect it to hold on to that until four years, I think that the district should have some type of mandatory something annually. So, is that in place in this case?
One of the things that we can do is, right now, we collect them. We did, we distribute them again, so we do an annual piece. So, we do an annual collection and then distribution. But if it goes with them for four years, we can have it, uh, checked out again. Checkpoints throughout the time. So, at the end of a year, come through, let's re- let's renew your item to make sure you still have your items and keep in that way, so that there could be checkpoints throughout each school year, at, at least once, if not more.
We're not there yet, but when we get to that, so that ninth grader comes to tenth grader, that first week of school, we will be part of the process. Again, re-educate you on how to handle the device, how to, how to turn in broken, stolen, lost devices. And then again, making sure you have all the updates. That first week of school, again, will be dedicated, making sure that Chromebook is where, you know, where it needs, I'm sorry, the iPad is where it need to be to perform for the school.
Let me add something to that as well, um, cause that would be an expectation. So, I appreciate you guys asking the question. Um, and I've been doing a one-to-one with students since two thousand and one. Uh, every, the district I was in back in Henrico, kids did take them home, but we had incremental times quarterly where they had to go and check them in and check them out. Um, there would be a day, uh, in that quarter where they had to all turn them in. And hopefully, by the end of the next week, we would get them all back to them. But we also needed to make sure that our teachers were aware of when those things were happening, so they could plan accordingly. Um, those things helped, that and all. That was a, um, another, the device like what our teachers have, the laptops. But the iPads are a lot easier to maintain with that. Um, and so, my last district, we had just a run-through, check-through. Make sure it's operating, um, and we did that through the library. Uh, their library time, they, they brought them in. We had different classes come in. So, that would be an expectation of mine as, as superintendent, to make sure that we have a plan in place for the checking and the monitoring. Um, I think today, we're getting to you the, the devices itself. Um, but I, I also want to have some input from families and students on that process, which is why it's not all flushed out for you today.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, I have three. Uh, one is, how many devices are we proposing?
Right now, we are twenty-two hundred.
Okay. Uh, two, if there is a warranty issue with a kid, how long will the kids be without a device?
Um, they, usually it's about three to five days, three to five business days. Kinda with our staff devices, it's the same turnaround.
Okay. So, what, what we have, devices for them to utilize during that three to five day?
Correct. We will have a loan available.
All right. And my last question is about the insurance. Uh, you mentioned that during the presentation. Would that be the cost of the parent?
So, that's the Apple Care. So, yes, that's the, well, we come up with the exact price, but we will have a insurance on it. We're gonna prepay it because we know it's necessary and it's needed. But we will have a, a cost when we will go over during the trainings, or what that cost may be. We just still need to flush it out first.
All right. So, it'll be a shared cost?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Vice President Smith?
I do have a really quick question, and this is really quick. So, I'm looking at the numbers and you guys, uh, estimated, uh, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year for four years. That numbers comes up, well, I got, I think, a hun- one million, one hundred and eighty thousand. Uh, anyway, there's about a, at least a hundred thousand dollar difference. I was just curious to know, is it just an estimate for overages or is there, are you, is there some other expense that we're not seeing?
So, I'm, I'm still reviewing the PMS and looking at all of that, cause I think we may need another hundred, cause I wanna have extra just in, you know, loan risk and what we just discussed. Additionally, we wanna make sure we have enough JAMP licenses too. So, we predict it over to make sure that we had enough.
Got it, got it. Uh, that's very important. Uh, is there, when, uh, when you present the information again, which actually, I guess we, we won't see it again. Include that piece, just for clarity.
Yeah, we'll have it by that time.
All right. Thank you very much, both of you. Ms. McParlin and Mr. Thornhill. All right, the next item on our agenda is discussion of the purchase of service vehicles for the Child Nutrition Department. Dr. Pereira?
Thank you, President Jones. Um, Dr. Kimbrough is gonna present that information to our board and our community. Um, as you know, child nutrition, we do generate some revenues that we must spend and take care of, and there's needs. Um, and that was what, uh, Dr. Kimbrough is gonna present.
Good evening, Board President Jones, Distinguished Board of Trustees and Superintendent Dr. Pereira. I'm here tonight for the Child Nutrition Department, seeking the approval of the purchase of three service ve- vehicles at a cost of one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And the vendor is Caldwell Country Chevrolet and Ford. Um, currently, the Child Nutrition Department does not have any vehicles, and this is a allowable, um, expense according to TDA. Um, the purpose of these vehicles is to transport commodities, equipment and staff. And also, um, my staff to conduct campus compliance checks and check for quality with the FSMC servicing our children meals. Um, during the twenty twenty-five, February twenty twenty-five board meeting, the board approved a budget amendment of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to purchase these vehicles. Um, the reason I am back before you tonight, because there are other layers of approval. Um, one is CH Legal, where we're using the best value, um, vendor, and that's through the uncooperative purchasing program, and we're using Byboard. Also, these vehicles, since they're more than ten thousand dollars, they are a capital expenditure. And we had to take this to TDA for approval for each vehicle. And the next one is CH Local, since we're spending more than one hundred thousand dollars with a single vendor, we have to bring it back before the board, for board approval. Um, the three vehicles we're requesting is a, um, Ford Transit Cargo Van at a cost of fifty thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. A Ford Explorer at a cost of thirty-nine, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and a Ford Expedition at a cost of sixty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that is the cost. And this cost will go towards reducing our two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Child Nutrition excess fund balance, which is eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and seven and eight cents, which we must spend by May first of next year. Are there any questions?
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Kimbrough. Any questions for Dr. Kimbrough on these items? Trustee Clues?
Um, my first question is, and I think you answered one of my questions. Um, have we, or did we, did we take an opportunity to look at any electric vehicles?
No, sir, because we will have to purchase charging stations.
Long-term, I think it would, it possibly would be more beneficial for the district. Um, so, my second question for you is, uh, and I've, I've thought about this for a few days. The Transit Cargo Van I got, but what would the purpose of the Explorer and the Expedition be?
Um, the Explorer is also, is gonna be used to transport staff and commodities. So, if we're just having, like, we have to move Miracle Lot from one campus to another, or small things, you can just put, it's more room. Um, the Expedition, the same thing, but we will also use that to attend mandatory trainings as well. Like, we have four mandatory trainings coming up for my team at Region Ten, and we will all, as four people on my team, with five, we would use that vehicle to also for travel to train.
So, did we explore the option of, say, a smaller vehicle? Um, particularly if we take the twenty-five Ford Explorer, perhaps look at a, uh, Ford Escape?
Well, that's, again, Mr. Clues, isn't the size of my team. I have five people on my team and getting them into that SUV. Um, that is why the Expedition is on there.
So, the trainings that you all are going to, can those trainings not come to us?
Those are Region Ten trainings for, um, child nutrition. So, we would have to attend them in Richmond. They do come out if we request them, but that's for specialized training, like if we need support for technical support. But the training with compliance, they hold those at Region Ten throughout the school year. We have four coming up in July.
So, I'm just trying to justify the cost here. So, you, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Kimbrough, you said four trips?
Well, they have Region Ten trainings throughout the year, but they have four back-to-back this summer that, that I know that are coming up for us.
So, do we not have other vehicles in our fleet currently that would suffice for this?
Well, this vehicle be, will be exclusive for child nutrition, our, our vehicle.
So, and you say that, which was the question I have, those vehicles, uh, vehicles can only be used by child nutrition?
They're a child nutrition first purpose, like child nutrition. But if the district has an emergency, somebody needs to use it, of course, but they just, they're to serve child nutrition first. But if we're not using it, and somebody like, I need another vehicle, of course, um, they'll be able to use it. So, we, you know, we, we'll work together. We're one district. They belong, they belong to Lancaster ISD, but the first purpose of it, Mr. Clues, is child nutrition.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Can I ask some context to that?
Dr. Pereira?
Um, yes, I, 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 I understand your concern, uh, Mr. Clues, cause I express some of the same. Uh, but knowing that, I know that the vehicles belong to child nutrition, um, and that we could utilize it with other teams. And like Dr. Barker's instructional team is quite large. We only have two vehicles that could transport kids, I mean, not kids, staff to like Region Ten. Having a third one in the rotation would also help and help us lower the cost of paying travel for teams that take their own personal vehicles for those. So, um, I had some concerns too. But again, once I would learn that it's, belongs to, they have first choice, but when there's not in use, we could also utilize it for other departments to also transport. You know, like we have graduation coming up right now. Uh, my team, you can see, we, we are, we're too big for, I mean, it's too many of us for the two SUVs that we have. So, you know, that could be an option for us as well. Uh, otherwise, we gotta take a big bus for maybe, we won't even fill up half the seats in there.
So, why not, this is just a thought, why not get a cargo van that can be suited for, um, travel, uh, as opposed to a SUV? Uh, I, I think for me, it's the message is, is
I understand.
Sending the wrong message, and particularly when we move, move in, into a budget year where there's so much uncertainty.
Optics.
And so, me as a parent, me as a taxpayer, when I look at this and I'm saying, hmm, we have two vehicles that are possibly just not necessary. Um, or if they're necessary, why not go a, with a, with a smaller, more compact vehicle? Um, it, it, it's just.
It's the optics. I get it. Um, I understand your, your gripe with that. Um, and it is something we It's the optics. I get it. Um, I understand your, your gripe with that. Um, and it is something we have thought through as well. Um, but I think it, again, for me, it's adding to our fleet that we can utilize in other places as well. And it's not just food services. But they have those dollars. And remember, that's generated differently.
Well, and, and that was the other, the other part that I had to think about, well, you have to spend it. So, yes, but.
But he's also, he's also repaired some equipment, they replaced some things, uh, they are looking at tables that they're replacing. There was a lot of different equipment that they are replacing. Um, that's, I mean, I can't say that we can't spend the money because we can. But we also are very, try to be very thoughtful about how and where we do it. But I understand the optics because I have the same gripe, uh, for myself.
Well, as long as I'm not the only one.
No, you're not.
Can I, can I speak for, for one minute?
Um, Mr. Clues, I said, um, currently, right now, um, we're almost sitting on four million dollars in child nutrition. Our six months operating expense is what the state looked at. We're at two-point-eight. We're close to a million dollars over in money we should have in that account. Um, we're going, and then we have to look at that with the high school and BMO becoming CEP. We're having more revenue come in than we can deal with. And we have to, or we will get a finding if we cannot, it's the opposite of the general fund. We have too much money and we have more money coming in on top of us. Um, and I talk about the new contract, that will help us some. But, um, we will, in child nutrition, we will have think, to think aggressively about spending to get, to get back because, you know, the funds were on hold and we got all those funds. Um, TDA is not giving us the extension to spend that money down. Um, we have to spend by May the first to get the account back. But I do understand your concerns, um, and vehicles are allowable expense. We did run the, um, TDA did cities vehicles, we sent them to quotes. And, and I do want to say cars are pretty high now. Um, even if you go, they are fifty, sixty, that's the price of cars now. Um, and, and, and the thing is to spend the money, but also to be reasonable in what we're spending and does it meet our needs. But, um, when it comes to child nutrition account just for us, we have to think aggressively. Like, we have a lot of money and we have money study coming in from the CEP status of the high school. We're going to be battling this fund balance for a while.
If, if, one last question, Board President. If approved, how long would it be before the district receives?
These cars, um, because these cars, they're not going to hold cars for you anymore. These cars, the van they, they are holding, the Explorer and Expedition, um, once they receive a PO, they will order these cars. He said less than twenty days, they will have them. And they will, um, we will pick them up or they can bring them to us.
So do we know if those cars are in inventory somewhere or are they?
Yes, they're in inventory at another dealership. But he said until they get PO that we're going to pay for them because it costs them to go pick the cars up and bring them to their dealership to give them to us. So he said they're not going to do that till they get a PO and they know that we're going to purchase because they will lose money.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't too far down the road because of these tariffs.
No, sir. Um, he said only, the only holdup is what I just explained, they have to go to another dealership and the dealership is going to charge them to get those vehicles. And they're going to, and of course, that cost is passed on to us. But if they do it early, then they will lose money.
All right. Trustee Nichols?
Sure. Thank you so much, um, Dr. Kimbrough, for your presentation. In reference to the vehicles, is there any reason why we chose Expedition and Explorer and not two Explorers? I'm just, why did we?
And, and, and that is, the size of our team is five members. So we were thinking about a, a vehicle that will, will be able, if we were to go to a training, our team would be able to fit into that vehicle.
Yeah. So I was thinking you probably should have got two expeditions because, um, you said we have all this money. And I, and I'm just thinking that, I'm just thinking that you're going to be utilizing those vehicles also to offset some of your travel, Dr. Pereira? I think you mentioned that as well. Um, because I'm, I'm just mentioning that. Also, do they come, you have the warranty and all that good stuff, right?
I, I, I would assume them being new vehicles.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yes, you will. Okay, okay. Because one of them is a twenty-twenty-four. I just want to make sure you, you do get the warranty.
I told, zero miles, they have to be new vehicles. It's one of the things I wrote, wrote in the specs that we want new vehicles. Um, not, not used vehicles is in the specs.
But so you just chose Expedition just to?
Just, I'm thinking, but just if the team is traveling, if for that, and also it'd be used as far as, um, going from campus to campus as well and moving commodities.
And then your staff can ride in some luxury and be comfortable.
Want to stay away from luxury?
Well, they'll be riding in some, uh, they'll have room because you got the Expedition for that, right? Because currently, what are they doing today?
They use their personal vehicles.
She just said, yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. If there are no other questions, thank you very much, Dr. Kimbrough. The, uh, next item on our agenda. Uh, we will go to, uh, board matters. And the first item we have here is the review of the Lone Star Governance Board Time Use Tracker. And let me get there. So again, this is number eleven. So you guys will have a chance to review this. And, uh, the information has been completed for your review by Ms. Allen. So if you have any questions pertaining to what is on here, please enter that information into the portal and we can address that before next week's board meeting. But we are, uh, improving in some areas as far as the use of our, of our time during the board meeting. So we will continue to strive toward having more dialogue on student outcomes. The next item we have is the first read of the Lancaster ISD Board Operations Guidelines. So we approved it, uh, in August of last year. And we made an update in January of this year. What I'm asking you to do is to provide any potential recommendations, uh, updates, revisions that you deem necessary. Uh, submit those, uh, in the portal. You can also email me your specific revision. And then we will look at this during next, uh, next week's board meeting. And then we'll have another read during the June, uh, work session and board meeting. And hopefully have it, uh, approved and finalized by August. So one thing I do, I will say that we have, do have some grammatical and some punctuation issues within the current document. Uh, a few things that I will speak to that we will definitely add will be around the language for, uh, town hall meetings, uh, those types of things. So if you have any additional recommendations that you deem necessary, uh, please submit those. And we will address that during the next board meeting as we go through the process. The, uh, next thing we have are reminders. Summer Leadership Institute, San Antonio, June eleventh through the fourteenth, uh, twenty-twenty-five, and Fort Worth, June eighteenth through the twenty-first. And we also have the Texas Ed Conference, which will be in Houston, Texas, September eleventh through September fourteenth. And the Cube Conference in Los Angeles, September eleventh through the thirteenth. Uh, I would also request that any trustees, if you are reviewing the information from tonight and you have additional questions that you did not pose this evening, please enter those into the portal as soon as they come to you, preferably at least seventy-two hours before the meeting. So the administration has an opportunity to respond back and that will allow our board meeting to progress, uh, rather smoothly. I would also ask for you guys to, uh, take note of the information that's been provided, uh, in our package regarding the advocacy agenda that was presented. Part of our packet that was on your diet. So review that. That may be an item that we will discuss, uh, during our board meeting. And you also have additional information regarding your hours, the hours reset after the reading of the information in April. So you will be responsible for getting the continuing education, uh, moving forward. That concludes all the reminders that I have. And the next item on our agenda is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, so moved and seconded. We are so adjourned. The time is nine-twenty-nine PM. Have a great evening.